Good evening and thank you for joining us virtually for our Meet the Candidates. And these are city council candidates for this upcoming election. We appreciate you guys coming out tonight and speaking to everyone virtually and answering those questions for us. So, thank you for coming out. We thank you guys for watching virtually. And I want to thank our volunteers, my chamber board for helping make this happen, and our moderator, Marty Hubbell, for coming out tonight, too. We appreciate it. Together, we are able to do lots. So, thank you, guys. I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much. Welcome to our candidates. So, everyone knows, we have nine candidates running for four seats on the City of Lebanon's Council, and they are all here tonight. The format is each will provide a 90-second opening statement. Once everyone has completed that statement, we will go to the question and answer portion of the program. Each of the candidates has been provided a list of questions, but not necessarily the order in which they will be asked. At the conclusion of our questions, each candidate will have two minutes to provide us with a closing statement. We will start off with our opening statements. And the first candidate will be Leslie Nahigian.
Good evening. First off, we'll tackle the question I'm most often asked, that is, how do you pronounce your last name? It's pronounced Nahigian. It is an Armenian name, like Kardashian, but with less money and more covered skin. I've been in nurse for 25 years, driven to the profession by a desire to serve, care for, and advocate for my patients. The same desires led me to local politics and running for Lebanon City Council. A desire to ensure my friends and neighbors' voices are represented in the decisions made on behalf of this community that I love and call home. I grew up in Maro, Ohio, went to high school at Little Miami, college at Miami University, earning dual degrees in anthropology and political science. Later, I attended the University of Cincinnati and received my degree in nursing. As a nurse, I've gravitated to leadership positions, allowing me to advocate for large populations of patients. I've worked to ensure quality, accountability, and patient safety in healthcare for more than 25 years. I'm a lifelong resident of Warren County, except for a five-year stint in Glendale, and a few months in Tubus City, Arizona, for a cross-cultural clinical placement on the Navajo Reservation, an experience I treasure. I love tennis, enjoy gardening, and share home with the two very best dogs in the world, Winnie and Milo.
Thank you very much. Next is candidate Brad Lamaro.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. I can also kind of relate with the butchering of the last name. Lamaro is not necessarily an easy name to pronounce. I've been in the insurance industry for 29 years, 11-year resident of Lebanon, married to my wife Elizabeth for 25 years, and proud father of four kids from the ages of 20 to 13. I think with my business background, I hope to bring to the council to help with the city planning, the city growth, and all the things that we're going to be facing as a community moving forward. I'm currently a member of Christian church in Mason, Ohio, and I've served as a Sunday School leader on the committee with the Sunday School class. Also, a past leader of Trail Life USA, a Second Amendment advocate, and a pro-life conservative. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is candidate James Norris.
Thank you. Saw an interesting Facebook post the other day with the speculation that I was Scott's father. No, I am Jim Norris, brother Scott. Since the late 1950s, I have passed you in a school hallway at the Y, not often enough, at a church, Kroger, or at the barn. It is said to me that I probably had 6,000 students in my time at Lebanon schools. The oldest would be about 63, and the youngest probably in their mid-20s. I've seen you at my seven grandchildren's games around town, but I don't know most of you. Twenty-seven thousand people in our town. I do value you, though, and your opinions, all of you. Tonight, listen for experience and the differences in the basis of judgment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next candidate, Alicia Lipton.
Good evening. I'm Alicia Lipton, and of course, I'm a resident of Lebanon as I'm running for city council. My husband and I have lived here for a total of 16 years, most recently for five years. We have seven children, so they're all grown, not in the school system. The youngest one just got sworn in as a police officer today, so proud mom moment. I'm running for city council because I want to bring change to the city. And I have that three platforms, one being equality. Whether we want to admit it or not, Lebanon has had a perception of being racially insensitive, of having racial issues. It's time that we address those and eradicate them. Also, governance. When I say governance, I mean holding our city council to the charter that they were elected to follow. And lastly, preservation. Preserving our city, our historical looks, our feels, and what makes us special, what's setting us apart from those other cities in Ohio that anyone could move to, visit, shop in, or start a business. I'm a graduate of Morehead State University, Miami University, and University of Cincinnati. Go Bearcats! They beat Notre Dame this weekend. I am thrilled to be up here today. I would be thrilled to serve the citizens of Lebanon. I promise to always listen, always have an open ear, and always be willing to listen to both sides.
Thank you. Next candidate, Michael Cope.
Thank you, Chamber. Thank you for hosting this tonight and giving myself and the other candidates a chance to speak directly to the voters. Many may not know or may know that I was appointed to city council three and a half months ago due to a vacant seat. So, I've served on city council for that three and a half months. And I can say that I love Lebanon. I love serving on city council and serving the residents. It's been a great experience, and I'm running to be re-elected to that seat. And I do appreciate being able to speak directly to questions that have been asked because of a lot of mischaracterization on a few that have large social platforms here in the city. So, this is a great chance to be able to address some of those issues. I will touch more on my work experience, but I've been over 30 years in construction management, a field that I would directly relate to my experience and how I can lean on that to help make good decisions for the city. I'm pro-liberty, pro-family, pro-life, and I'm pro-Second Amendment. Fiscally conservative. If anyone's been following the last three and a half months, I think they'll see that I make fiscal decisions, fiscally conservative decisions. I am a constitutionalist, and I believe in small government, and so I will continue to make decisions in that regard. I'm known by my work peers and acquaintances as trustworthy and honest and a man of integrity. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is candidate Bree Markham.
Hi, everyone. My name is Bree Markham, and I am running for Lebanon City Council. I moved here from Mason about seven and a half years ago with my husband Jeremiah, who was born and raised here, and our daughter Gianna. I am an IT professional by trade and have many years' experience within the nonprofit sphere for workers' rights and farmworkers' rights and human rights. I also come from humble beginnings, which I believe has made me resilient, compassionate, and amplified my drive to serve and help others. I believe we should also look outside of party affiliations, and that's why I chose to not partner with a political party. I look forward to hearing what the other candidates have to say and sharing with you my thoughts on local issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is candidate Scott Norris.
Thank you, and thank you for this forum. My name is Scott Norris. I'm running for Lebanon City Council. I am a 44-year resident of Lebanon. I've lived here through my graduating in 1978. Went to college in Taylor University in Indiana, moved to California, got a master's degree in marriage and family therapy, had a Zusa Pacific, and worked with Children's Services out there for approximately 10 years. I found a job back in this area. I've always loved the Midwest. We could have chosen anywhere to move. We picked Lebanon for what I remembered it to be, and also for what I, at the time, saw it turning into as well as a growing and a positive city. I brought my wife Terry with me, and we have two daughters, Lindsay and Jessie, who are both raised in Lebanon and graduated from here as well. I worked with Community Mental Health Center, which it was called at the time, for 22 years. I started as a home-based therapist and worked my way up to program director of our Kids and Family Services, which enabled me to collaborate with several different agencies in town, broaden my base of people that I know and people that I could work with as well. I'm excited to run for city council. I believe in Lebanon. I love Lebanon. I feel it's on the right track, and I want to be a part of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next candidate, Matt Sellers.
Hi, my name is Matt Sellers. I was born and raised here in Lebanon. In fact, the house that I was raised in is now the parking lot of Lebanon Methodist Church on Warren Street. The first job I ever had was at my dad's woodworking shop, which was located here in Lebanon. And my next two adult jobs were also here, located in Lebanon. So, as you can see, that Lebanon's quite a crucial part of my life. I have recently, after years of spending in corporate America, I've recently started a small business, and if you could guess, I've located it here in Lebanon, Ohio, as well. I also first met my wife, Tanya, at church off Mulberry Street here in Lebanon, and we're now blessed with a strong-spirited three-year-old, Mateo. I love this community, and I can't wait to take this opportunity to give back to it what it's given me. I'm a constitutional conservative. Now, when I say constitutional conservative, we're talking the Constitution as ratified by the founding fathers, not the Constitution as interpreted by judges years after. So, I would be humbled and honored to just have an opportunity to serve this community. So, on November 2nd, I ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is candidate Brian Hawley.
Hello. My name's Brian Hawley, and I'm 39 years old. I've lived a majority of that 39 years here in Lebanon. I did go to college at Eastern Kentucky University, where I got a degree in criminal justice. Upon moving back, I did live in Springboro for a couple of years, never got too far away from Lebanon, though. I've been around this city my entire life. Like I said, I graduated in 2001, where I played football and also wrestled. Continue now, I'm part of the youth wrestling program I assist there. I've worked in the city in public works. My dad was a 33-year employee, retiring as the Assistant Chief of Police for Lebanon. My brother-in-law worked for the fire department for a bit, and my sister is currently at the school. So, we are fairly connected within the city and been here a long time. That's given me a chance to meet a ton of people, and I would love the opportunity to serve on city council for him.
Thank you very much. We will move on to the question and answer portion of our program. We will begin this with Mr. Lamaro. Mr. Lamaro, how long have you lived in the Lebanon area, and what civic organizations have you served or supported in the area prior to running for elected office?
My wife and I have lived in southwest Ohio for about 18 years, specifically Lebanon for 11. I've been involved with a lot of youth organizations. I've got four kids, so that's where a lot of my focus has been. Trail Life USA, which is a conservative alternative to Boy Scouts. I've already mentioned Church Sunday School, the NFIB, Chamber Commerce in Butler County, where my business is located, and then I would say, you know, the local Republican Party.
Thank you. Mr. Norris, same question. How long have you lived in the Lebanon area, and what civic organizations have you served or supported in our area prior to running for this position?
Other than college in the early '70s, I've lived here since 1957. I helped to create the Lebanon Alumni Association, which tries to raise money for scholarships for children of alums. I have been a part of the Solutions Counseling and Recovery Services since the early 1980s. I've been a museum trustee since the mid-1990s, and I served a term on Main Street, Lebanon. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lipton, how long have you lived in the Lebanon area, and what civic organizations have you served or supported in this area prior to running for this position?
I have lived in the city of Lebanon for now 16 years, and that's combined. I had lived here for 10 years, moving here in 1996. We were here for 10 years, and then I moved not too far away, just to Mason down the road. When we had kids leaving home, we were looking to downsize, and we could have moved anywhere. We wanted to stay in the Cincinnati metro area, and we chose to come back to Lebanon. It's a walkable community. It's a friendly community. It's someplace that we wanted to call our home, and we've now been here for five years. When my kids were little, I was a Sunday school teacher. That was here in Lebanon at Lebanon Presbyterian Church. As they got older and their interests changed, so did my involvement. I was the past president of the Young Marines of Cincinnati. I have worked with the American Diabetes Association for fundraising, and also Light the Night for Leukemia-Lymphoma Society, and we're having our annual walk tomorrow night. I was on the Lebanon Chamber Board, and that was back in, I believe, 1998. I most recently was working with Main Street Lebanon, and I also am a member of Artscape Lebanon. So, I believe in being involved with the city, getting to know the citizens, and serving the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cope, same question. How long have you lived in the Lebanon area, and what civic organizations have you served or supported in the area before running for this position?
So, I've lived in the Lebanon area for 28 years, 14 of those in the city of Lebanon. 14 of them would have, if my house would have been one lot over, it would have been all 28 years in Lebanon. So, we made a choice to move into the city 14 years ago. Been married to Kim Cope, my wife, wonderful wife, for 28 years. We have four children that we've raised here, and they've all graduated. Well, one's a senior, so three of them have graduated from Lebanon, and I have one that's a senior. And as I've mentioned before, I love Lebanon for all those reasons. I've served currently the three and a half months after being appointed to city council. I've also really focused, this has been my first public position, I focused my 28 years in this area on family, faith, and work, but have coached a lot of sports activities. I would follow my children in the things that they were doing to be engaged with them, and with coaching in Say Soccer, coaching at Warren County, at Cup. So, I spent over 10 years coaching. Currently, have always been involved in youth either as supporting or leadership roles. Either I went to Urban Crest Baptist Church for 10 years, currently at Countryside Nazarene Church, just down the road here. And so, I'm heavily involved through youth programs and youth leadership there. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Markham, same question. How long have you lived in the Lebanon area, and what civic organizations have you served or supported in this area before running for this position?
Like I mentioned earlier, I have been here for about seven and a half years. Pre-pandemic, I was my daughter's Girl Scout troop leader, and I also was an assistant swim coach here at the YMCA, where our daughter was on the competitive swim team. Locally, I support Lebanon Food Pantry, MLK Coalition, and I volunteered for many organizations in Cincinnati and greater Cincinnati, helping with sexual assault survivors, houseless individuals, and several other grassroots projects.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Norris, same question. How long have you lived here, and what civic organizations have you served or supported in the Lebanon area before running for elected office?
I said earlier, my first stint was, I was born in Dayton and resided in Lebanon until I graduated, and then I came back 17 years later from Los Angeles and have lived here since 1993. I'm married to my wife Terry for 35 years, and again, I had two daughters that I raised here. I've been, through my mental health involvement, through working there, it opened me up to being able to be involved with a lot of different organizations as help was needed, more as a backdoor-type help-type thing, not necessarily on boards or committees. I was able to support them through bringing a group that I established called the Trailblazers Youth Work Team. We were called upon to do various civic-type projects in the community, which we did all over town, painting, building, construction. We did a trail, which is where our name Trailblazers came from, and I did that for 15 years through my agency. Been involved through my church, teaching Sunday School for several years. I've coached Pee-wee football. I'm very involved with the Historical Society and had the fortunate ability to be able to do a lot of work in bringing the Beetle Cabin to Lebanon, which is located downtown right now, and a great place to see. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Sellers. How long have you lived in the Lebanon area, and what civic organizations have you served or supported in our area prior to running for elected office?
Well, as I stated earlier, the city of Lebanon has pretty much been my life. Again, born and raised here, with the exception of some teenage years. We lived in the outskirts in Argonia, but, you know, 45036 was still our hometown, especially if anybody here knows Argonia. As far as entertainment goes, there's not a lot there. So, we spent a lot of Friday nights at Colony Square Cinema, even at the teenage years. But I'm currently a board member of the Lebanon Festivals in Tourism, which is just a board appointed by city council for the development of tourism and supervision of festivals. I've also am currently a board member for Catching Fire Outdoors, which is a nonprofit organization which focuses on getting the youth outside the home, reducing screen time, and getting them hooked outdoors, you know, hunting, fishing, and, you know, sunshine, wind, and all that stuff. I also coached basketball at Little Miami for about six years. And, you know, being a part of all that not only has been just phenomenal, but the learning experience and the experience I've gained from individuals there has just been incredible. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Hawley. How long have you lived in the Lebanon area, and what organizations have you served or supported in the Lebanon area before running for this position?
So, I guess I kind of answered this in the first portion where I introduced myself. I've been here around 39 years minus college, and then a few years in Springboro. Even when I was outside the city, some of you guys won't remember, but my parents still sent me the Western Star. So, I still stayed connected with the local community. Now, I do help with the youth wrestling program. I volunteer for that. I don't have any kids. I just want to teach the kids, or teach support to the kids, and hopefully make them enjoy it, or help them enjoy it. I'm down to specializing in kindergarteners now, so I call them my Little K Squad, and we have fun. I've also volunteered with different food drives and all types of different events throughout my life in the city. Again, I said I worked for Public Works. It was more a summer job than, as soon as I got out of college, I worked there a few more months than a normal summer job. That's where I truly fell in love with working for the city and working for the people, was when I was, I came in before Memorial Day, and we were mowing the cemeteries and stuff like that, and that really gave me self-pride of not just the community, but what that weekend represented.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Nahigian, same question. How long have you lived in the Lebanon area, and what civic organizations have you served or supported in the Lebanon area before running for this position?
Sure. I'm a 17-year resident of Lebanon and a lifelong fan. I grew up in Maro, Ohio, and visiting Lebanon was a treat. We came here to watch movies at the Colony Square Cinema when there was just one screen, go for ice cream at the parlor, shop at Kay's or Haynes. I'd go to the tractor parts store with my dad, visit Harmon Museum, and we'd celebrate special occasions at the Golden Lamb. I was a huge 4-Her and lived for Fair Week as a kid, so took up residence one week at a time each summer here in Lebanon. I still love all of those things, the combination of small-town charm and big-city amenities. Small enough to know your neighbors, big enough to support good schools and a variety of businesses, all within an hour of two major cities. Before COVID and an illness in my family, I was a master gardener here in town. I had the opportunity to help install the medicinal garden at Glendower, speak at the garden club, and weed that rain garden in Miller Park. I currently support Harmon Museum. I've taken part in MLK Community Coalition events and service projects to benefit the Women's Shelter and local food pantries. I'm also an active precinct election official or poll worker, so if you're looking for ways to get involved, that's a great activity, twice a year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will move on to our next question. Mr. Norris, you are first. What do you believe is the most important issue facing the city of Lebanon, and if elected, how do you plan to address it?
An important issue is the current council's manner in which they arrive at decisions. I think that comes out in later questions. I'll move on. Why do we love Lebanon? And what comes to mind when we say that is going to be directly impacted by the development of Turtle Creek Township into our north and west. You can do a visual in your own mind of how other cities have dealt with this by thinking of South Montgomery Road and Deerfield Township and Mason, how they've come together, how they've worked at that, and whatever you think that has been done, to what degree of quality. Infrastructure and schools then for children with regard to what we hear of thousands potential housing starts certainly raises the question for council and its involvement in that discussion. Again, I think this comes up in other questions, and I will certainly address that more. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lipton, same question. What do you believe is the most important issue facing the city of Lebanon? And if you are elected, how would you address it?
I see this as having two very important issues that we need to address. The first one would be equality. No one should ever live or visit Lebanon and not feel welcome here. They should never feel inferior. They should never feel that their voice does not matter. So, if elected, one of the first things that I will do is we will bring a Human Rights Commission to the city council. I know that there's some talk right now that the chamber might be doing that, and that's great, but it is something that the city council needs to recognize. We need to acknowledge the issues, and we need to eradicate those issues. And I will always stand by those who have felt minimized, discriminated against, or ignored. The other one would be governance. We need to bring our city council back to following the city charter and, quite honestly, staying in their lane. Recently, they've made some decisions that were based on personal views of morals and religion. Religion has no place in making public policy, and those are the two things that I would stand for in making a change if elected.
Thank you. Mr. Cope, same question. What do you believe is the most important issue facing the city of Lebanon? And if elected, how do you plan to address it?
The most important facing Lebanon right now is the pressures from the growth. Unfortunately, the question about experience would lean into this because my work experience and my current position as Director of Facilities and Construction and Project Management is how I will help to deal with this. The growth pressures, just in three and a half months, Union Village, or recently, Union Village, which is 1,500 homes, roughly 12,000 residents when it's built out over the next 10 years, will be impacting this community. Our recent approval of Parkside Development is another 1,200 homes, and that's going to be another hundreds and hundreds of students impacting our schools and residents. That kind of pressure has to be, is exciting, but it's got to be managed well. That's going to put strain on our infrastructure, many elements of our city, especially the character of our city. We're known for being a hometown, small hometown feel, exciting downtown, but this growth will have pressures on our city. And I will lean on my 30 years of experience to help protect the city's charm. The 2009 City Comprehensive Plan is outdated. It's currently getting ready to be updated, so I will be greatly involved with that, and I look forward to that in using my work experience to help solve those problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Markham, what do you believe to be the most important issue facing the city of Lebanon? And if you are elected, how would you address it on council? And if you are elected, how would you address it on council?
I believe that one of the biggest things affecting our community at the moment is the impact that the pandemic has had on our local businesses. If elected, I would make sure that we would be reaching out on a personal level to the business owners to figure out what their needs would be, provide resources, COVID relief funds to help them bounce back. I also feel like it's imperative that we address staffing shortages that are happening in town and work on increasing tourism, and not only for the downtown Main Street area, but for uptown off of Columbus and those businesses as well. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Norris, same question, sir. What do you believe is the most important issue facing the city of Lebanon? And if elected, how would you address it?
My job now, which I didn't state earlier, is a general contractor, as I've been able to work closely in Lebanon restoring older homes, understanding, being able to listen and talk to people as they come around and kind of see something that was very ugly turn into the way it used to look. And it's reestablished my love of history in the community and what makes Lebanon important and why I moved here from California in the first place. So, I would say I feel that growth management and continuing to ensure Lebanon maintains that historical relevance is extremely important. A lot's been said tonight already about managing growth. Subdivisions are coming, growth is coming, there's nothing we can do about it. We all who live here or who are running for council moved to Lebanon for a reason, and we want to stay here. Other people are going to have those same reasons and want to stay as well. I believe in establishing a constant watch on residential growth and how it affects our area businesses, how it relates to school, and how it will have an impact on our city services, and making sure that budgets are prepared to handle that as well. I do feel the city growth and school issue will be a big one, and we'll definitely have to spend a lot of time on how we're going to deal with the incoming onslaught of students that will be coming with 3,000 homes being built a couple miles away from us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sellers, same question. What is, in your opinion, the most important issue facing the city of Lebanon? And if you are elected, how would you address it?
Well, first off, I think Lebanon's in great hands with the current sitting City Council. I've, they've fully got my support with the direction that they've got the city going in. That being said, as far as an issue that I do feel like that is, the city is facing is the potential changing of the face of this body, from a conservative one of small, limited government to one of massive state control. I think it's an issue that we face throughout our country, and I think it's, you know, it's a national issue that's hitting every city locally, and I don't think that's any different here in Lebanon. It involves the expansion of local government, the removal of God in our community, loss of constitutional rights, and basically the loss of individual liberty. As far as addressing it, I mean, I guess that's why I'm here. I feel like it's a duty of mine as a patriot of this country and a patriot of this community to do what I can to help secure the God-given and inalienable rights of these citizens here in Lebanon. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hawley, same question. In your opinion, what is the most important issue facing the city of Lebanon? And if you are elected, what would you do about it?
Well, everybody's talked about growth, and obviously, not only is Lebanon growing, but the communities around us are growing. My big concerns are public safety and infrastructure on how we're going to be able to deal with that and make sure we are planning for those things. I know last night at the planning meeting, not planning meeting, the council meeting yesterday, they spoke about hiring two new police officers, and then another thing was brought up about the courts possibly going full-time due to the population increase around us. Lebanon courts don't just serve the city of Lebanon, they serve the townships around them too, so those count into our population for that court. There is a possibility that we will have to expand that court. We need to be thinking about that at this time. We also, as we add more citizens, we need to add more firefighters and police officers to be able to deal with the additional calls, the additional things we're asking them to do. You know, 10 years ago, we weren't asking police officers to provide Narcan to people. Now we are. There's a lot more things that police officers are doing, the same with fire, the same with Public Works. So, we need to make sure that we are able, planning to be capable of handling all those things as we grow. And I thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Nahigian, same question. What do you think is the most important issue facing our city? And if you're elected, how would you address it?
I see three issues: communication, practical policies, and representation. The city's been the focus of lawsuits, wasting time and taxpayer dollars. Current council members, however well-meaning or well-liked, do not represent Lebanon as a whole, and City Council needs CPR. Communication, I'll work to improve opportunities for residents to provide input and feedback to City Council, participate in council meetings, and have the transparency we deserve. And there are three ways to do that. Our Mason neighbors speak at both the beginning and end of their regular council meetings. Citizens should have the last word. Let's adopt that practice in Lebanon. Virtual meetings are now a way of life. We have an opportunity to make our virtual council meetings more accessible and more interactive. Not everyone can physically get to a meeting, but everyone deserves a voice. We live, we, oh, sorry, we have live audio and video for regular council meetings, and we need to have this for council work sessions as well. There's too much context that's lost without offering live access to those sessions. Practicality, we need a social media policy for council members. It's 2021. Most organizations have a policy prohibiting the use of private social media accounts for business use. Why should council members be any different? Such a policy would have protected Lebanon from a recent federal censorship lawsuit. Lastly, representation matters. Current council over-represents a portion of our community. Council members are nearly carbon copies of each other. Diversity of thought brings better decisions and represents more Lebanon residents.
Thank you. Mr. Lamro, what do you think is the most important issue facing the city of Lebanon? And if you are elected, how would you address it, sir?
I had a coach tell me once that momentum is hard to get, and it's easy to lose. One of the things that I see is we've got great momentum in our community. I really appreciate what our current and past leaders have done to generate that. I want to look at our infrastructure as we're bringing in these homes and make sure we have a viable tax base to support our schools and our safety services. We do that with schools, or we do that for our schools, but we also with the small businesses that are coming in and starting to, that are generating that tax base. So, those are a couple of things that I think that we need to focus on. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. We're moving on to our next question. Ms. Lipton, you are first. The current City Council recently passed an ordinance establishing Lebanon as a sanctuary city for the unborn. If elected, will you support this law or will you seek to overturn it?
Lebanon Council did recently pass an ordinance for the sanctuary city. It's an ordinance that they should not have passed. They went outside their rules and responsibilities of what a council member should do in following the charter. They need to focus on the infrastructure, on the building, on the construction, on our roads, and not focus on a woman's personal choice. That's a decision that should be left up to the citizens, not council. I would like to talk to citizens on both sides of that to hear what they have to say. And if it's a draw, then we'd put it out for a vote. Lebanon citizens should have a voice on that. Their rights and responsibilities, as far as a sanctuary city goes, should not be dictated to them by seven people.
Thank you. Mr. Cope, same question. If re-elected, would you support that law or would you seek to overturn it?
I would support the law and pro-life. As a matter of fact, the reason I was appointed to council was due to a resignation over that issue. And I'll be real clear, I celebrate life, whether it's in the womb. I'm in senior living, so I see the expanse of life. And dignity, we as citizens have to celebrate each other's dignity in life, race, creed, color, it doesn't matter, from womb until senior living. I've seen what it means to care for people, to love people, and to provide dignity. So, yes, I will support the pro-life amendment. I would add that it was actually a pretty good planning move since, I would note that even two weeks ago, Congress passed, Democratic-controlled Congress passed a bill, abortion on demand at any time during birth, or at any time during a baby would be carried, up to the time of birth. So, that baby could be ready to be delivered and aborted through partial birth abortion, when in seconds later, it would be considered infanticide. So, yes, I do support that. The people that came here and protested were from big organizations, Planned Parenthood sent a bunch of people down here to yell at everybody at the courthouse. I wasn't on council, but I walked out and saw the, really the vow in hate that was spewed out, just walking out of the room. So, that's a multi-billion-dollar organization that did really well last year, had 350,000 abortions, the most ever. So, yes, I will stand for life in this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Markham, same question. I will just read it in full. Again, the current council recently passed an ordinance establishing Lebanon as a sanctuary city for the unborn. If elected, will you support this law or will you seek to overturn it?
I don't want to stand up here and have an abortion debate. I will just say that this ordinance was unnecessary, could potentially cost the taxpayers lots of money. They say that it's not going to be enforced, but when it comes down to it, if someone were to report someone else, police would have to report to that, and that could lead us to lawsuits. Banning abortions also doesn't prevent abortions. It doesn't stop it, it doesn't lower it. So, if I were elected, I would definitely seek to overturn it, and I also don't support voting on it. I don't believe that we should be voting on things that are unconstitutional. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Norris, would you support the law or would you seek to overturn it?
I would not seek to overturn the sanctuary city ordinance. I'm very proud to reside in a city where leadership reflects its belief in all life and protection of all, young, old, and the unborn. I don't see this as a religious statement, although my faith directs all my decisions that I make. I'm not perfect. I try to do the best I can to be guided by my Lord Jesus Christ. I see it as a human rights decision where all humans, young, old, the unborn, deserve the protection, and those who certainly can't protect themselves. And again, I state, I am proud to be part of Lebanon, Ohio, that took a stand for the unborn, and I'm proud to be endorsed by the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sellers, same question. Would you vote to, or excuse me, would you support this law or would you seek to overturn it?
I fully support this ordinance and will fight to ensure that it's upheld. Government was established in this country with few constitutional roles. Protecting its citizens from enemies, foreign and domestic, is one of those. So, it was the duty, it's the duty of the City Council to restrain violence, no matter the age, race, or creed, against any of their citizens. This ordinance is absolutely constitutional. Our Manifesto of Freedom, the Declaration of Independence, declares the independence and absolute sovereignty of each state, and the Constitution as ratified solidifies it. The city, as a corporation of the state, has the ability to legislate for itself, as long as it doesn't violate the state constitution. Since Ohio does not mention abortion in its state constitution, there's nothing directly forbidding Lebanon from passing this ordinance. It's called the American right to self-govern. And to finish, I'd like to summarize quickly on the myth of Roe v. Wade. Article 3 of the Constitution gives the Supreme Court specific powers. Interpreting the law and ruling in non-federal cases are not one of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hawley, same question. Regarding the ordinance establishing Lebanon as a sanctuary city for the unborn, if elected, will you support this law or will you seek to overturn it?
Being honest, up until it was introduced as emergency legislation, there wasn't much talk of abortion talk in this city, so it's all come rather quick to all of us. I've spoken to plenty of friends who have ideas on both sides, or beliefs on both sides. I acknowledge their beliefs. I have my own beliefs. It doesn't mean my own beliefs are best for the entire city. If this was a topic we felt needed to be brought up, it should have been brought up and voted by the citizens, not seven people on council, in emergency legislation at that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Ms. Nahigian, would you support the law or will you seek to overturn it if elected?
It is my personal view that a woman should make health care decisions for herself, and her right to self-determination doesn't end with a pregnancy. As a nurse, I think the ordinance has the potential to harm women who don't see an option to seek help for abortion services. I fear they'll turn to other means to terminate their pregnancies. The ban doesn't stop abortions, it stops legal abortions. Overturning the ban is not a primary goal of mine in seeking office. I think council should stay in its lane. We have plenty of other work to do besides overreaching into private family matters. However, if presented with the opportunity, I would consider overturning it, though I would talk with folks on both sides. I think this has harmed Lebanon's reputation and our merchants, and I think there were irregularities in council members' communications with each other and the public ahead of its passage. Council didn't have the ordinance until the Thursday before they voted to approve it. It was brought forth as an emergency measure with no first reading, and there was no plan by Planned Parenthood or any other abortion provider to move into our city. So, due diligence, in my mind, was absolutely abandoned. The legal representation promised by Barclay Dixon and his organization is for the council members, not the city.
Thank you. Mr. Lamro, same question. If elected, will you support the ordinance or will you seek to overturn it?
As a Christian conservative, I would definitely support it. I'm unequivocally pro-life, so my thought is, is let's be forward-facing, let's focus on what has made Lebanon great, let's not look at the past, and let's keep moving, let's keep that momentum, keep our town moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Norris, would you support the ordinance establishing Lebanon as a sanctuary city for the unborn or will you seek to overturn it if elected?
To warm up to the attempt at scholarship on this particular subject, as a teacher for a long time, that's certainly what I did professionally. So, I turn to our Charter of 1960, Article 3, Section 3.01, under action of council. I see a number of things with which council does in its business, or will do at the time in its business. And the only phrase that I find that may apply here is "on all matters of a general or permanent nature." So, from that, our council, I guess, I was not on council, chose to further the pursuit of that ordinance. May I also throw in the oath that four of us will take. In being chosen to council, I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the state of Ohio, and will obey the laws thereof. Strikes me again as inconsistent with this story with regard to this ordinance coming into being. By my experience and by my, what I learned in all those years on council, we dealt with safety, infrastructure, and the pursuit of business and business prospering in Lebanon. Never, thinking along these lines, didn't think we should. Never came up. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our next question. Mr. Cope, you are first. What life or work experience do you feel qualifies you to be a City of Lebanon council person?
Thank you. For starters, the three and a half months that I have been on council, I believe that the decisions I've made have, would be proof, proof of the pudding, that my work experience can help lean into making wise decisions for the city. In 1991, I received a Master of Science in Construction Management. Since then, I've, for 30 years, approximately 30 years, I've been in the construction business the last eight and a half as Director of Facilities. I've gone from working in the field as a laborer to supervision, superintendent, and project engineer, project manager. project engineer, project manager. I've built infrastructure of hospitals, medical and office buildings, sports complex, if anyone has ever been to University of Dayton, right there off of 75, that complex I built. So I've renovated sports complexes, and sewage treatment plants, power plants, other roads. In my current position as Director of Facilities, senior living campuses, currently three campuses spread around Ohio, is like managing a small city. Capital planning, and loan obligations, and especially the capital planning part. So that helps me make the decisions that the city needs. And so that's the work experience that I can bring to the city, continue to bring to the city, in making wise decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kope. Ms. Markham, same question. What life or work experience do you feel qualifies you to run for this position?
My professional background has mainly been in healthcare IT. I've worked with many of the area hospitals and healthcare groups in Cincinnati and Columbus. I have assisted and led refresh and software implementation projects. That includes managing the budgets and working within tight deadlines. I've also personally faced many of the same challenges that people in our community and my neighbors have experienced. I've spent years organizing and attending teach-ins and devoting my time to help those in need, and I believe these skills, and me being a little bit younger, that combined, I would be bringing a new, unique perspective to the city council.
Thank you, Ms. Markham. Mr. Norris, same question. What life and/or work experiences do you feel that you've had that qualifies you for this position?
I feel what I can bring to the table is my experience in working among groups to develop something where nothing existed before. When I started with Warren County Mental Health, there were, I was the child social worker, the child therapist, and the home-based therapist. When I resigned there, seven years ago, there were 23 positions that I helped create and establish, a school-based network that went to nearly every school in Warren County, and also collaboratively worked with Juvenile Court, Children's Services, Warren County Educational Service Center, and programs for kids and families. I like people. I like to see things get done. I like to be a worker bee, where I don't like to say, "We've never done this before, it can't be done." I like to find ways to get it done, and we were able to grow those programs, which I think can transfer over into city council as well, as, to work on programs and things that I would like to see improvement on, or just start, because I think it would help Lebanon a lot. I assisted in obtaining funding, grants, donations to assist the goals that were recreated at my agency. And my recent experience as a contractor, and my focus on restoring homes, has brought a great appreciation on how the town works, enables me to work closely with the city government and the permit process and establishing, getting things done where it was difficult to do before. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sellers, same question. What life and work experience do you have that makes you feel you are qualified for this position?
Well, as far as work experience goes, I did mention before, I'm a local business owner, and when it's a small business, you're involved in pretty much every decision that's made, and every process that's established. Before that, I was a project facilitator and team manager for a Fortune 500 company, which involved daily problem, problem-solving. And, you know, let's just, it was never a dull moment there, so that was crucial, problem-solving was crucial on a daily basis for success at that facility. As far as life experience goes, I've pretty much spent my entire adult life studying this, Constitution of the United States and Declaration of Independence. For our founding generation, this is all the experience one needs to be a representative of the people to be free. That's why we have a written constitution to ensure that regular citizens can serve a free people, and not just career politicians. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hawley, same question. What life and/or work experience do you feel you possess that qualifies you to be a city council person?
Well, in terms of life experience, I've mentioned numerous times that I have been in this community nearly 39 years. I've shopped at all the local shops, I've eaten at all the local restaurants, I've supported the schools. Like I said, I graduated in 2001, which made me lucky enough to be on the state championship team. I didn't exactly play, but I did have an interception in pre-game warmups. I've worked, straight out of high school, I worked for the Warren County Engineers Office at mowing ditch lines, stuff like that. Later, as I've mentioned, I worked for Lebanon Public Works. That entailed some roadwork, a lot of mowing cemeteries, a lot of taking care of the parks. So I've been around this area. I then worked for the City of Kettering for about five years, and I'm currently work for the Warren County Clerk of Courts in the Common Pleas Courts. So I've been around this community for a long time. I've worked in different agencies, government agencies, for a while, and I look forward to doing it again, and I thank you for your role.
Do you remember who threw the interception? It was a teammate.
Brady?
I'm just asking you.
Yeah, it was, oh, yes, yes, it was Brady Merchant, and pre-game warmups must, they did win the state championship without me playing.
I figured, I just thought this was a good forum to call him out on that.
Yes, he, they played well that game.
Ms. Nahhegan, same question. What life and/or work experience do you feel qualifies you to run for this position?
Thank you. Our city charter outlines the powers of council and makes for a great job description, so check that out. Council members do things like approve budget and tax rates, focus on community goals, projects, growth, land use development, and strategic planning. Council also hires and supervises the city manager. With decades of healthcare leadership under my belt, I'm experienced in all areas needed to serve you and our city. I've managed multimillion-dollar operating budgets in several organizations. Operational improvements made by me and my team have led to millions of dollars and saved or increased revenue. One of the areas I enjoy most is strategic planning. Visioning new possibilities and programs is exciting. It can't stop with a wish list, though. Success depends on communicating and monitoring key performance indicators that help evaluate how well we've implemented a plan. Project management, too, is key in delivering on a vision and a budget. I've led large, multiple improvement and implementation projects focusing on healthcare safety, training, and IT functionality. Like Mr. Kope, I've been involved in facilities management in a healthcare setting. My teams and I have navigated HVAC and air exchange malfunctions, utility outages, weather emergencies, decontamination processes, and IT security breaches. Lastly, with respect to human resources, I've led teams large and small, and been recognized for both staff satisfaction and retention.
Thank you. Ma'am, Mr. Lamro, same question. What life and/or work experience qualifies you for this position?
I have a bachelor's degree in business administration from Mount Vernon Nazarene College, actually, well, it used to be college, it's now a university. I guess maybe I'm showing my age there. I've been in the insurance industry for 29 years. I've served all walks of life, every demographic, you name, you name the demographic, and I've served them, or they're currently, I'm currently serving them in my book of business. I've had the privilege of helping people at their time of need, everything from a claim, from a new home, from a marriage, from a birth of a child, I've been able to walk through that process with them in their insurance needs. In addition to serving families, I've had the unique experience of working with small and mid-sized businesses all over the Midwest. Contractors, distributors, manufacturers, trucking companies, farmers, just to name a few. I believe this gives me a broad spectrum of what business owners need. I can use this knowledge to help council make decisions that will help benefit families and small businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Norris, same question. What life and work experience do you think you possess that qualifies you to run for this position?
In 2000, I was a reform candidate, along with two others, and a much younger Amy Brewer, who was serving on council, and brought in to replace a group who the citizens deemed we needed to make a significant change. I served four terms, which makes me the most senior council member in comparison to those on council currently, except for the mayor. That's nearly 50 meetings a year for 16 years. Thirty-seven years in teaching in our Lebanon schools. My master's degree is in guidance and counseling, one of them is, in which, fitting well with my teaching work and my time on council, I was able to hone active listening skills. I am not perfect, and I'm learning all the time, learning to value all opinions of all ages and all walks of life. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Norris. Ms. Lipton, same question. What life and/or work experience do you possess that makes you feel you are qualified to be a council person?
I think first and foremost is I am not afraid of hard work. I worked through college in the summers as a flagman for the Ohio Department of Transportation. First 15 years of my career was in marketing, and it was all healthcare-related, and I worked for retirement living communities. I was there from new construction to building out, dealing with building permits, dealing with grant requests. I still am working in healthcare, but now I'm in the public relations sector for Hoxworth Blood Center. Communication is key, whether it's for a blood center, or whether it's for a city, and you need to have your crisis communication, you need to be transparent to the citizens. And I feel I bring that to the table. I've also done strategic planning, looking out for the future, and very careful budgeting. You cannot spend money or plan to spend money that you do not have, and you need to make sure that it's being spent wisely. It's not our money to spend, it's the taxpayers' money to spend. And my experience with long-term healthcare, plus also being in a non-for-profit world of blood banking will help me with that. I think the last thing that I can mention is being the mother of seven children has taught me how to mediate very, very well, and also how to get them to where they need to go at the end of the day. My role with Main Street Lebanon over the past eight months has also made me very invested in the community, and knowing what the merchants need, what the merchants want. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidates, this will be our last question. Each candidate will have 60 seconds to answer this, so we stay on our time deadline. 60 seconds for each response. Ms. Markham, what policies would you support to encourage a company, large or small, to open their business in the city of Lebanon?
Sorry. I think first, we need to make it a desirable place for other people to want to come here, and that looks like making sure the businesses that are here are succeeding, that are here already. Upgrading our parks, you know, more outdoor recreational activities, using, utilizing grants and sponsorships, and that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Norris, same question. As a council member, what policies would you support to encourage a company to open their business in our city?
I would like to explore incentives to businesses, not just, not just large companies, but also the businesses downtown, to assist in getting established during the tough startup phase. I'd also like to develop a sort of exit interview to allow those who choose not to establish business, and a chance for them to say why, so our leadership could focus on those reasons, to see if it's something that we could actually put some energy into making change to attract that business back, or business like it. That worked very well as a supervisor at mental health, where I was able to do exit interviews with people that were leaving, and it, we could bring that information back to assist in change. I also feel open dialogue, preferably off social media, would assist in heading off issues and developing change and compromise.
Thank you. Mr. Sellers, as a council member, what policies would you support to encourage a company to open their business or move to the city of Lebanon?
Well, the city of Lebanon is really a city built on the foundation of small businesses. So we have a long history of support and encouragement for bringing businesses in within these limits. So I think we need to continue to incentivize small businesses by reducing and removing as much red tape for development. I also remind people that, again, Ohio, the state of Ohio is, again, a sovereign entity, and Lebanon can legislate anything that doesn't violate Article I, Section 10 of the federal Constitution, or anything in the state constitution. So I support reviewing through many federal business mandates, potentially releasing some business of unconstitutional regulations. We need to keep in mind, as Thomas Jefferson said, "An unconstitutional law is not a law." Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hawley, same question. What policies would you support to encourage a company to open their business in the city of Lebanon?
I guess when I immediately think of the word policy, I think of what policies are we putting in place to govern those businesses. And I don't believe that we should be stepping in in that aspect of government. However, I am looking to anything we can do to incentivize other companies coming in, especially if it benefits the city as a whole. In terms of small businesses, I know they've hurt over the past year or so. I think we should do everything we can to not only market the bigger companies, but also market the smaller local shops, and see what we can do to promote them. If there's any policies that other neighboring communities have that we think fit with us, we could approach those. But it would be back to talking to the citizens, talking to the business owners, trying to figure out what policies they believe in.
Thank you. Ms. Nahhegan, same question. What policies would you support to encourage a law, large or small company, to open their business in the city of Lebanon?
Thank you. I'd first ask for input from city staff as to what other cities offer for economic development. We want to make sure that Lebanon's competitive without giving up what we don't have to. We have an attractive downtown area, and it's the envy of our neighbors in Mason and other municipalities. Infrastructure, though, matters, not just downtown, but on Columbus. So attention to things like traffic flow to allow access, not just to new businesses, but to existing businesses, becomes very important. If the city is able to provide things like short-term utility discounts or land leasing, that would be beneficial, and within reason, and if both staff and budget allows, I'd support any current and future work by the city to assist with marketing or promotion, or connecting businesses with other agencies to promote their success. Lastly, we know we have a housing and a staffing crisis, so thinking creatively about ways to address that locally would be key.
Thank you. Mr. Lamro, same question.
I think to continue to promote a business-friendly environment, invest in infrastructure that's going to support the growth. Support our schools, both our local Lebanon schools, our trade schools, our tech schools, and then to make sure that we have qualified workers, and then continue to promote that. Promote our recreational areas. 100% of my family lives out of town, my extended family. Every time they come into town, one of the things they want to do is go downtown. They want to go to WIT, they want to go window shopping, they want to go into some of the stores. I think we need to promote that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Norris, what policies would you support as a council member to encourage companies to open their business in the city of Lebanon?
First of all, with regard to safety, I chaired the last fire levy. One of the results of that is, can be viewed heading north on Broadway as you look at the new rise of our new fire station. I was also very supportive of the creation of a additional fire station in the south of town that would provide better coverage for the industrial park. I support all efforts that we made to continue to be in the wholesale electric area, giving better rates, and be more attractive to those who would resettle here with regard to that industrial park. I certainly am proactive in my thinking and thankful to past city manager and government leaders in our city to address what needed to be done to give us a permanent solution to our water supply, as well as addressing other utilities.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Lipton, same question. What policies would you support as a council member to encourage a company to open their business in the city of Lebanon?
To encourage new companies to come to Lebanon, first, I think we need to take a look at the existing policies. What is keeping people from coming, or what is bringing people? What worked for us in 2019 might not work in 2022, and we need to be looking to the What worked for us in 2019 might not work in 2022, and we need to be looking to the future. We need to converse frequently with our Chamber of Commerce. What are they hearing? What are they hearing from other cities that are gaining new business? We need to be able to encourage them with incentives. That could be through TIFs, it could be through land lease. We need to be able to support that new company coming in, whether it's with fire, police, infrastructure of roads and water. We have a very strong city manager in Scott Bronka and his team, and we need to be able to support them and let those companies know that they will be supported when they decide to make Lebanon home.
Thank you. Mr. Kope, as a councilmember, what policies would you support to encourage a company to open their business or move their business to the city of Lebanon?
Sure. Currently, in the last three and a half months, I've supported pretty aggressive policies. I would say that, right now, we do not want to really mess with the policies that we have in place. We have a successful, a great staff in our city, in our city team. Just for an example, our 2022 budget just was released, and revenues are expected to be up 4%. We'll be over 100 million city budget for the first time. So contrary to what some comments have been, the atmosphere for businesses moving into the city are great. Just last night, we approved a multimillion-dollar expansion for engineering plastic components. That's another 25 to 30 jobs. So we have good incentive packages, and our city staff are using it well, and I'll continue to support those policies. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Norris. We are now done with our question-and-answer portion. We're going to move to our closing statement portion. Each candidate will have two minutes to provide a closing statement. We will start first with candidate Scott Norris.
Thank you. In closing, I have a strong belief in our city, and I definitely respect our current leadership. I chose to live in Lebanon, bring my family here and raise, and raise my family here as well. I work here, I created a business here, and I'm honored to have this opportunity to devote time and energy to maintain the progress I've seen Lebanon have over the years, and I look forward to an even better future. I've been taught by the best, my father and his Marine Corps rigidity, Lebanon athletics under the tutelage of Coach Vanegriff and his ever-watchful eye. I mirror those I respect, I try to make them proud. I care about Lebanon, not just for my success, but for the people who have helped me and poured into me and given me the time to get me to where I am today. There's not a square inch of Lebanon that I haven't walked on, ridden my bike on, jogged on, back in the days I could jog and enjoy. Fun names like Bashford's, The Ice Cream Parlor, watching those develop, being a part of walking in and out of the town is why I want to live here, is why I want to serve here, and why I want to be part of a council that's going to continue to grow and develop and make it an even better city than it is today. And thank you very much for the time, and thank you for the chamber for doing this. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Mr. Norris. Next is candidate Matt Sellers.
First off, I just want to say that it's a privilege to be up here. It's just a privilege just to be a candidate, to potentially represent this, this great city. I think, I think the office of city council is one of the most important offices an individual can hold in this country, because the founders framed this country with a bottom-up government structure, not a top-down. So we need to think locally and act locally to preserve traditional American principles that established this country, and frankly, made it the greatest country in the history of the world. So what's at stake? So there's, there's no secret that our country is facing tyranny from elected officials. Tyranny, that would put King George to shame. But in recent months, Lebanon has taken a stand for liberty, a stand and said no. We need to hold this line. I always like to tell a story President Reagan once told of a Cuban refugee, a businessman who had escaped from Castro in Cuba in the 1960s. After telling the story, two Americans turned to each other and said, "We don't know how lucky we are." And he turned to them and said, "How lucky you are, I had someplace to escape to. If you lose freedom here, there's no place for you to escape to." Reagan said, "This is the last stand on earth, and in America, everything starts locally." We can't rein in the corruption that has plagued Washington DC overnight, however, we can keep we, the people, as the driver of the car within this community, thanks to our founders' vision of the true American principle of self-government. So on November 2nd, the city of Lebanon has the ability to ward off tyranny, the great eternal foe of mankind, and continue to say yes to liberty. Thank you for everybody here, and thanks for putting on this great event.
Thank you, sir. Next, candidate Brian Hawley.
Once again, I'd like to thank the chamber for putting on this event. I know it's been difficult, especially with this COVID situation going on, where we had to do this virtual. I think everybody would like to be doing this in front of as many people as we can get in here. I thank the city for helping me be who I am today, because that's who, you know, my teachers, my coaches, everything else from growing up. Oh, I thought he was pointing at me, sorry. Sorry, lost train of thought there. So, so helping the city, the city basically raised me. I would like to help the, the city grow. There's a lot of big projects coming up the next four years, and on November 2nd, I'd thank you for your vote. Also, sorry for the brief, I thought he was pointing at me. Stop it. Thank you.
We had a little bit of a technical glitch. Thank you for completing that statement. Next is candidate Leslie Nahheyan.
Thank you. If elected, I can promise to actively listen to all residents, whether you vote for me or not. Every resident is my constituent, and I promise to listen with empathy and a goal of understanding. We won't always agree, but you'll always know why I made the decisions I did, and they won't come as a surprise. I'll work to ensure that you have a voice at city council. I promise to play by the rules and uphold open meeting laws, and I won't say in private what I wouldn't say to you in the street. I have a wealth of work experiences that apply well to the duties of a council member. And I'll challenge my fellow councilmembers and myself to keep our focus on city business, roads, taxes, utilities, development, planning, all the functions outlined in the charter, and no fluff or political resume fillers. I love our community, and I'm invested in its success. I very much want to earn your vote. Early voting's begun, election day is November the 2nd, so please vote for Nurse Leslie Nahheyan for Lebanon City Council. And I want to commend our viewers, you've invested almost four hours this evening, if you listened to both the school board candidates and council candidates. So thank you to the chamber, and thank you to all of you for being with us tonight.
Thank you. Next is candidate Brad Lamoreux.
So I want to focus on momentum, infrastructure, growth, and schools. I'd like to use my 18 years as a self-employed business owner. I'd like to use that background. I'd like to use the experience that I've gained from the NFIB, from the Chamber of Commerce, from the Farm Bureau, from a former Dave Ramsey financial peace instructor. I'd like to use that experience to help guide our city. Lastly, I want to end with some endorsements that I've received from the Conservative Republican Leadership Committee, Mayor Amy Brewer, Warren County Right to Life, Councilman Doug Shope, and former Rep. Ron Magg, and most recently, the Warren County Republican Party. I'd like to appreciate your vote on November the 2nd, and for more information, my, my Facebook page is facebook/votlamoreux. And I probably don't have enough time left to spell Lamoreux, so you can go to the chamber website and figure that out. Thank you.
Thank you. Next candidate, James Norris.
Lamoreux, L-A-M-O-R-E-A-U-X. Thank you to the chamber. I'd like to finish a thought that I had with regard to the last question. I, I want to place a great deal of importance on the strong partnership between the city and the chamber and Main Street Lebanon, and I do believe the data that is generated with regard to Main Street and its impact on downtown businesses. On November 2nd, you can vote for four candidates. It's very clear where the current council stands and who supports them. It's been repeated this evening. Two-thirds, actually 70%, did not vote last time. 18 years old and up, women and men, consider who has the experience and who best wants to hear from all of you in making final judgments in the city's business. I'm not beholden to any group, there's no code words on my signs. I pay for my campaign. I'm an independent thinker, as I has exemplified by my previous 16 years of service. I am grateful for you paying attention to our comments here this evening, and wish us all the best. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is candidate Alicia Lipton.
Thank you. Over the past eight months, and working with our area merchants and getting to know them and what their needs are, I wanted to help, I wanted to do more. And the best thing I could think of was to run for city council, so that I could represent not only the merchants, but also the other citizens of Lebanon. I promise that I'm going to listen more than I speak. I'm going to give you a voice at the table. No one will ever be demeaned, chalked down to, or ignored. I can promise that. I can also go back to our council, our council should be nonpartisan. Yes, it's true, we all have different parties that we may belong to, we may lean one way or the other, but when we come together in that room, those differences need to be put aside. We need to make a decision on what is best for our citizens of Lebanon, and be able to agree to disagree, do it in a friendly manner, but again, do what's best for the citizens, not what's best for me or for the person sitting next to me. I can promise you that that's something that I will always do. I believe we deserve better, and I invite you to vote for Lipton for Lebanon on November 2nd, or even earlier if you do early voting. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, candidate Michael Kope.
Thank you. Thank you, chamber, for putting this on. As I mentioned in my opening statement, this is, I appreciate it's helpful. Also, as I mentioned, I love Lebanon. It's, this has been interesting, being appointed and being on council for the last three and a half months. As I've learned a lot, experienced a lot, it's helped me to have to define what I believe and how my faith helps me make decisions, and, and I have been humbled. I consider it an honor, and it is a duty. When I lifted my hand and swore, I meant it. And so I'm humbled to be in this position, and I hope to be elected to the seat and continue to serve the city of Lebanon. I think my work experience over the last 30 years can help the city, can help me make decisions for the city, for the citizens, for our residents in Lebanon. We are going to be under a lot of strain due to the growth. We cannot hide from it, and we need to make sound fiscal policies and continue to implement the policies that are in place, and I will honor that and do that. I am pro-liberty, pro-family, pro-life, pro-Second Amendment. I am fiscally conservative. I would be honored to have your vote. Mike, vote Mike Kope on Facebook, and thank you.
Thank you. Next is candidate Bree Markham.
Yes, thank you. I wanted to start out first by addressing that. I kind of bumbled through the last question, and so I wanted to make sure that you all knew that I fully support doing whatever we can to make sure the railroad is repaired. I know that it brings in a lot of business, a lot of people come in, they go to the restaurants, and working with them to see if we can't do something that will help the other small businesses outside of the restaurants and the train. I believe that Lebanon needs cooperative and responsible leaders to address the concerns of the residents and take, take action without burdening our taxpayers. From my experience, most disagreements aren't about the disagreeing on the issue, but how to resolve the issue. I think that asking questions, active listening, and not taking things personally, and being able to work together to minimize conflict, if I was elected, would be something that would be beneficial to the board. And in closing, not the greatest public speaker, I am more than welcome to speak with any of you. You can reach out to me privately or out here, and I promise I do a lot better job than up here speaking, so thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our program for the evening. I would like to thank all candidates for your answers and for the words you've spoken, and thank you to all the chamber folks that helped put this on. We wish you all the best of luck.